Alright, um, my name is Chris Barrera, I'm the president of LULAC here in Salinas. Uh, thank you very much for, for coming out to this meeting. Um, we, uh, sorry that it's a little nippy out here, but, uh, you know, we had to schedule something very quickly, you know, regarding this, this important meeting. Um, to, to let you know a little bit about LULAC, um, our mission statement is, the mission of the League of United Latin American Citizens is to advance economic condition, educational attainment, political influence, housing help, and civil rights of the Latino population of the United States. Now, that being said, about three weeks ago, I started receiving a lot of phone calls about the relocation of the, uh, of the homeless shelter. Um, I hadn't heard much about it, but, uh, I thought it was my duty to let the community know, so I reached out to a few different people, and not too many people knew about it. And so, we, we, um, we had a vote with the LULAC board to go ahead and sponsor this event, and, uh, just to let you know, LULAC has not taken an official stand on this position. We're just here to, to organize this meeting, and this is an opportunity for you to ask your community leaders about this, this situation.
Well, isn't it also to be addressed to the community of the people that's in Ohio? And how do you feel about it?
Yeah, well, that's what you said.
That's why we're here. So, so I would like to welcome our city council members, Tony Barrera and Jorge Del Wilson, and thank you very much for, for attending. And I would also like to acknowledge Fernando Armenta, Elil Lozaluzar, Mr. Dan Burns, and so...
John Gay isn't happy?
John Gay isn't happy?
As a happier secretary?
Okay, and, and also, um, the coffee is provided by LULAC.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. There, there are some pamphlets in here, some in Spanish, some in English, uh, provided by the city. Megan Hunter, Megan Hunter, so, uh, she came through, um, she came through for us, so, so here's a little bit of information.
And we'll pass them in a little bit, because there's gonna be a little bit of confusion. You'll read it after we do a discussion, because there'll be a little bit of confusion here.
So at this, at this time, who would like to go first?
Well, thank you, and on behalf of, uh, the community, we want to thank you for being here. You know, one of the things, uh, that's important to us is to inform... You know, the, uh, Big Sur Land Trust has just bought 72 acres here, down here for a park, and eventually they want to be able to buy the entire area for a big park. Now, what we did know, that at 1220 Natividad, which is in the corner, they were talking about, the supervisors and the city council, we were talking about a shelter, is that right?
No, that's true, let me sit over here, I'll correct you.
Okay, there was a, we were discussing a shelter...
A transitional shelter, that's what we were told.
Yes, transitional shelter, that was gonna be put at 1220 Natividad, which is right on the corner. And the reason they were talking about a transitional shelter, because you have mental health here in Natividad, you have medical services, uh, and it was closed for them. So, but the other thing is, on last Monday, when we were in the finance committee, we, we heard, uh, I apologize.
The mayor calling you.
So, so we, we heard that, that 1220 was going to be some kind of a residential housing, apartments, and that at 855, which is in this area, uh, right there, if you see those buildings, that's 855.
Are you sure it's not this corner?
Well, well, you know what, we asked Mr. Nick Chulos at the finance committee if it was going to be here, because remember, that's where they were proposing the new juvenile hall.
Yes, 855.
Yes, so what happened...
Well, excuse me, they also, the community recovery center, if it's, I have to confirm it, that was a corner location, that's, that's, looks like the most famous, 10,000 square feet, right Enrique?
Yes, as far as the last proposal, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but this is 855.
Yes, so, yeah, so Mr. Armenta, we did ask that question, Mr. Chulos said, "You will not be able to see it from the road," so evidently it's not gonna be here.
It's gonna be over there.
But then we went and spoke to all the employees over here, and they didn't know what I was talking about. You know, you have ROP, you have the alternative schooling, you have a lot of great programs, they have not been informed. Uh, and I just want to clarify something, we are not here to tell you what to support and what not to support. We're here to inform you that there was a decision made at the Board of the County today, they voted on it.
Yesterday.
Thank you, yesterday, that it's a done deal. Now, what needs to take place, that is gonna go before the city council on October 9th, for a vote of collaborative effort, because there's 13 million dollars that needs to be spent on this project, by, before the end of the year is up. So, my concern, and Councilmember De La Rosa's concern, was there was no community involvement. Now, what they're gonna do on October 1st, which you're gonna get a pamphlet, you're being invited to a meeting, so they can tell you, this is what we're doing.
Monday.
On Monday, October 1st. Now, and that's okay, but we're gonna have to vote on something that maybe the community is not in favor of, and maybe the community is in favor of. What I am concerned about, that there was no meetings, and now this meeting is taking place, because we had requested to have a meeting today. So, some people in the administrative, uh, office didn't want us to have this meeting today, because they didn't want us to cause any confusion. Well, the confusion is this, we're city council members, and I won, I didn't, I didn't know what was going on, I knew about 1220, I just found out last week about...
Yes, when I heard about it.
So, and we're the electors, we're the ones that they're asking us to vote on it. So now, with that information, the reason we wanted to meet with you today, on October 9th, the city council is voting on this, the county already said yes, now the city council, if they say no, then it can't work, but, there's gonna be 13 million dollars that is gonna be lost. Uh, we do need, we do need a tran- transitional shelter, or a permanent shelter. This will be a permanent shelter. We do need a shelter, because there's a lot of hardworking people that are, or are ending up homeless. They're, they're not drug addicts, they're not alcoholics, they're hardworking people that are not able to sustain themselves financially. So we do need a shelter, but our concern was, why didn't we not inform the community so they can have a say-so, and find out what's the best place? Now, there's a lot of people that don't want it, you know, in certain, they want to bring it over here. Now, some people had already said, "Well, this is not part of Isalinas." Well, that doesn't matter, but, there was people that said that. So, uh, and I have to speak, uh, somebody that I appreciate in, in local government is Supervisor Alejo, Supervisor Alejo drove this, he was invited to the meeting today, hopefully he'll show up, uh, so he can explain, uh, what we're, what they're doing, uh, but Supervisor Alejo said, "On October 1st, we're having a meeting." The sad thing about it, it's gonna be a meeting to tell you, this is the direction we're going.
So, just, make, correction, for me, this is not a done deal yet. What I, I have a copy of the county staff report, yesterday that was approved by the Board of Supervisors, and I called Nick Chulos an hour ago before I came here. It's not a done deal, it just got this thing on the track. That's all it did. They have to do an environmental impact report, because when they attach to the motion yesterday by, by Carl Holmes, the RMA director, about environmental considerations, an hour ago I called Nick, and luckily I got him, an hour before I got it. What does this mean? What does this mean? Does this mean we're gonna bypass completely seco? No, there'll still be an environmental impact report. I don't see, unless it comes, uh, I don't see how they can do it, maybe it comes, uh, it looks like, if, if, if this goes through, wherever, wherever it's at, it's probably after we secure the funding, but it's, it's kinda awkward, so we need that clarification. Do you need, you can't do an environmental impact report, even a negative deck, I think, within 60 days.
Well, and, and then like, like Tony just said, Councilmember Barrera, this is going to the city council, we have to vote on it. There's seven of us here.
And I don't mean to pick on the mayor, but, but, it's just, it's just, as much as I agree or disagree with Supervisor Alejo, I'm not gonna get into that. Is, 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 people have been meeting from the leadership on the Board of Supervisors and county staff, with the mayor and the city manager's office, probably the last couple of months, how did this just pop up out of nowhere? So, I, I don't know the dates and details, my impression is, if you look at the video from yesterday, anyone of you can go on the county website, and probably go to Archives Video, and you click into yesterday, and you click into video, and you go to the 130 item, you'll see everything that transacted from the community and the board and staffs.
Well, today, today is information, we wanna just let you know what's happening, if you're in favor for it, fantastic, if you're not, then you need to let your voice, you know, we're not here to tell you how to vote, what we're asking you, is that you're aware of what's taking place right now.
And, and can I say something? And then also, that you let other community members that couldn't make it tonight to go to the October 1st, show up at the city council meeting, because I'll tell you, like anything else, we had Mr. Saavedra, who was the only one that showed up, right, in, in public comments, and we were telling people, "Show up, you need to speak, we need to hear." So, again, we need your support, we need to hear from you.
Mr. Burns?
So, one of the things...
Mr. Burns, let him know where you are, please.
There's another meeting...
Yeah, we'll just give you a little bit.
We'll give you October 1st, okay?
So, I'm Dan Burns, Superintendent of the High School District, and I have a school right here, that services about 450 kids a day, at different times of the day. And we, we experience, uh, ongoing issues right now with homelessness, we've had full fires in the month of August, and it's, uh, it's something that we want to be able to be part of the solution, and solution process, so, the understanding, and agreement I have with, appreciate you all doing the meeting together, is that a lot, this has taken a lot of us by surprise. And I met this morning with Megan Hunter, and she showed me on a map, that the shelter's gonna be at the street level.
Oh, no, it'll be here, 855?
So, the confusion is part of this, I'm just telling you, I met with her this morning, and that's the map she showed me, and I met with Luis Alejo, and the map he showed me circles the area at the street level as well.
So, I was right.
Because our concern, because they said they weren't going to tear anything down to build it, that's why they were, that's why they were selecting the lower part, down the hill. So, I think, if anything, if we could all get some clarity on the way, and how, and if the city planners are gonna say to me as a superintendent, as a school right here, that we want you to sit down with us and be part of the solution process, my school board is not anti-homeless, anti-shelter. We have children that are homeless, they come to school, but, we also want to be part of that solution process, and understand that, look, you can't kick, kick people out at 6:00 in the morning, because they're gonna walk up the hill...
And children.
Right? And they're gonna walk back down into the creek.
Yep.
Until they can come back, if they don't work. And, but, but the other part of the two, that we're offering as part of the conversation point is, if ultimately the shelter ends up here, which I was told a warming shelter, ends up here, then how do we talk about putting some type of other services to support them? How can I put in a gold school classroom, potentially as an educational entity to say, "What provides an additional service other than a booth?" That's an important stat, but what else?
And I, and I would like to speak on behalf of a lot of citizens, we're not affiliated with any political party, I live down the street, my son plays soccer in this part right here, um, I went to Alisal High School, and the ROP Center was a huge part of the Alisal High School community, um, you know, for the children developing, developing. I work up here, just up here, where MLK, San Sanborn School are at, Sanchez School. We get not a trickle, we get a downpour of homeless people coming through our community. Our community in Isalinas already suffers from so much violence, we have to deal with gang violence, we have to deal with homelessness of our own students and children, we have to deal with socioeconomic situations that are way beyond our control. Why would Monterey County decide to put a homeless shelter here? Monterey County is huge, it includes Carmel, and Monterey, and Marina, and all these other areas that don't want the homeless solution to be in their backyard!
Exactly.
Why do we have to do that? I, pardon me, I'm so sorry, Mr. Rueda, let me finish what I have to say, I'm very angry, because five or six years ago, we dealt with the same thing, when they were talking about building that transitional place here, here, next to our students, our children! My children will go to Alvarez High, they will be using the ROP Center, they, why should my children be, you know, having to deal with this homeless situation? And I am sorry, we are not going to get homeless mothers and children only, we're going to get people with a lot of emotional situations, uh, drug abuse, um, of, you know, situations where they're not mentally stable, and that's not their fault. This is not a matter of lack of compassion for the homeless community, this is a lack of concern for my children and everybody's children here, this should not be happening in Isalinas, again! Monterey County, get your heads in, out of the clouds, and go find a spot by Fort Ord, and when I'm... Fort Ord might be a nice place, find a spot where it's away from our kids and our community.
Well, you know what, just from what you just said, at the finance committee meeting, we did have county officials, we did ask about Fort Ord. What I was told at the finance committee, that they would have to go through more bureaucracy, because there's even, you know, you got Fora...
I will tie myself to a tree before I let them...
Well, hold on, I'm on your, I'm on your side, hold on, but because this is an easy site...
Oh yeah, no, not anymore.
Look at, well, it's an easy, look, even Mr. Burns, who has a lot of community investment here, with our families as yours, he is not even aware of what, some of us are being told it's over there, some of us are over here, well, or in the corner, you know it'll be in the corner as well. So, so look at, with, with that, October 1st, that's where I would like to see you.
See you there.
This is where Supervisor Alejo, Supervisor Phillips, the mayor, if it's true what Supervisor Armenta's saying, that the mayor knew about this months, we just found out last week, as council members, that's why we asked LULAC, "Could you join us to put a community meeting together, just to inform people?" So this is the...
But one of the problems with, with the county and the city, is that these meetings always take place at an inconvenient time for those who work, right?
Doing it at 6:30.
So, so, when meetings start at 4 o'clock, and working people get up at 5, and we got families to, to feed and go home, before we can make it to a city council, or a municipal meeting, it's hard to do, right? And so, you know, we always get treated like second and third class citizens at Salinas residents, right? Like looking at us having a town hall meeting on a beachy fucking sidewalk, it's bullshit. And you know what, the county, the county would never, the county would never propose a shelter in Carmel or Monterey, ever! The county of Monterey, I repeat, will never do it.
There's children here.
So it's, hey, they can listen, because you know what, it's important, it's environmental racism! It's environmental racism, it's environmental racism, right? Right? Maria, no, 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 let me finish, Tony! I'm almost done. Marina passed an ordinance regarding RVs, right? The Quirque Park, was it Lupes or Heaven Road? They came to Salinas, they pushed their homeless people out into Salinas, and my understanding is, I think Monterey and Carmel, they're passing similar ordinances, so they're saying "F you" to the homeless people, and then we gotta make up for, for all the services that they need. It's not just a shelter, Tony, you and I know this, it's all of the other, it's the infrastructure that they need, it's employment training, it's the reintegration services, it's all of that, and they know this! And then there they go, they have a meeting on a Tuesday at 1:30, where we can't even participate in the political process! And that is, and that is a problem that many of us have, we're all compassionate, we'll take care of our own homeless people, they need services, they need shelter, we'll take care of our own, but we can't have other cities push their homeless out, because we're gonna, we're not gonna do nothing, we're not gonna stand up. We'll help, I have no problem with helping our, our local homeless, but the problem I have is that, also, you have other larger cities, like Las Vegas, that took their homeless people, put them on a bus, and sent them to cities like Fresno, Sacramento, San Francisco, and probably Salinas, right? Just dumped their homeless people from out of state. So what are we also doing about other cities dumping, and other states dumping their homeless on, on us? And it's, and it's not, it's not fair, because I've lived in Salinas, I grew up on the, on the east side, Harden, Williams Road, I, I grew up here, I know a lot of people here, I look at our homeless, and they're not, they're not, they're not from Salinas. I have compassion for people from Salinas, I'll help you, but you know what, we can't help everyone.
Can I say something?
So, so, just, just real quick, uh, to clarify something, the reason we're on this sidewalk, is because we were scheduled for ROP, but we found out that the parents are having their, their, what do you call it?
Meeting?
Uh, their...
Open house.
Open house, thank you, open house, and the reason we couldn't change the date really quick, because it was already too late, so that's the reason, but we were scheduled in there, but they're having an open house at their school. So, the other thing is, October 1st, and thank you Aurelio, October 1st, that's where the people that are pushing this are going to talk to you. That's where you need to show your anger, your concern, and let them know, why are you making decisions without really notifying us, yes sir?
Just real quick, and I'll be brief, I think as, as someone who lives here in Salinas, who have a house here on Laurel, I would expect it, at a minimum, that the city and the county need to be very transparent with the process, I mean, that's at a minimum, but also as elected officials, you know, Mr. De La Rosa, Mr. Barrera, um, if you could even take a step further and advocate our, our concerns at the city council level, um, we're really happy to talk to you one-on-one, or share our concerns, share our houses, um, meet our family, our kids, who live here, who, who, you know, they've walked on the sidewalk, who, we work here, um, and, and again, explore other, other sites, I mean, this is not the only site in the whole county, there's, there's, I'm sure I can think of three other sites, and just make it a, make it a transparent process where you have community engagement.
Absolutely, well, you know what, at the council meeting, you already have two council members that are here listening, if you live in the Creek Bridge area, it's Mr. Scott Davis, if you live in Acosta Plaza, it's Mr. Scott Davis, he's gonna be at October 1st meeting, if you can get four council members that can say "stop," and let's listen to the community, it will stop. Now, now, the concern that some people have...
Call them.
Yeah, you need to call them, it's gotta take four votes, it's gotta take four votes now. October 1st is when they're going to tell you, uh, exactly what's happening.
I called Scott Davis yesterday, I've yet to hear back from Scott Davis.
Well, he's your council member, so he needs to answer the phone.
I called him yesterday, I left a very long message.
You will see him October 1st, and you can tell him that.
And that's why I'm angry.
Well, you know what?
He's supposed to be there too.
Well, Viegas?
Viegas, he represents the institution.
And just so you'll know, I will not be there, because you can only have three electives at every meeting, so the mayor's there, I know the mayor wants this project, because he said, he doesn't want to lose the 13 million, um, so...
Where does he live, what can put him in his house?
So, what I'm, what I'm letting you know, the other people are gonna be there, the mayor, Scott Davis, Viegas, so there's three other electives.
I'm supposed to be there too, because I represent the other side.
Good ask, question.
Yeah.
I think it's very clear, none of us are against this, right?
No.
But let's, let's take a vote right now, without getting further details, and details are very important, I wanna know, how many people are interested in having a homeless shelter right here? Raise your hand. Nobody?
Nobody.
So, so the thing is, we got, we have school board members, the elementary, high school, city council, board of supervisors, state reps, whether you make the meeting or not, the pressure needs to be mounted very, I'm very impressed by this turnout today, I'm very impressed. You get as many people here today than you probably get at the city council and the Board of Supervisors. Just look at the video from yesterday, there was hardly nobody there, except probably 10 or 12 people. The thing is, we need to chime in, we gotta get assertive, we gotta get aggressive, and it's almost like, no disrespect to Phillips, I served with Phillips, no disrespect to Alejo, or any other supervisor, we need to probably stand out, out in the street, before the meeting starts, an hour before with signs, "We do not want a homeless shelter," saying a strong message, and this is, they, they either listen to us, or, and then, and if they don't listen to us, besides this meeting, what is the next organizing political effort beyond that? And the thing is, note their respect to my wife, Noemi, on the Alisal School Board, she has a board now, so you need to go ask your board, there was an incident today, over at MLK, not picking on homeless folks, regarding, uh, harassing or doing something to an elementary student, that, that is not new. It is, is, I asked her, "Ask your board," same thing with the high school board, "Ask them if they'll consider taking a position, once you have enough information, whether you want the shelter here or not." You guys, you need to consider doing that, it's a, we, we, we can organize among themselves, but we got friends here today, and not here today, they're on various school boards, city council, I don't know about the Board of Supervisors, note their respect, you know, I served there 16 years, is, is, um, you know, I, I called Simone, Salinas, and I text Supervisor Phillips yesterday morning while they were in session, you know what, the Vietnam Memorial Committee wasn't aware of this until Monday.
No, they were not.
And all I asked you to do, and John was very good, I saw him on video today, he was there live yesterday, said, "We want to be part of the process."
That's right.
Well, the, the thing is, is that, we need, they need, they need to hear more, they just don't want you to listen to us. Sooner or later, what I'm sensing is, folks here with a little bit more position, on a plenary basis, we've already taken a position supposedly, left the final decision, we don't want the homeless shelter here, we want it somewhere, but probably not here.
And I like what you said, we're not against homeless.
Right.
We're not against shelters.
But, but just so you'll know, one of the things, and to stating to your comments, I did ask about the Fort Ord, they said there's too much bureaucracy on top of bureaucracy.
And there always should be.
Yeah, so, this is easy, because it's county land, you know, there's 13 million dollars that, it's gotta be spent by the end of the year, of this year, so, I think October 1st is a very important meeting for you, it's at 6:30 PM, 6:30, so that's a good time.
I want to tell you, so, do those 13,000 have to be on this, on this, or can we do something else? Because my concern is for our youth, they have nothing to do here.
It has to be spent on that.
It has to be spent.
Yeah, the money's...
About our homeless children, integration center, study center, library...
But it was like Mr. Burns said, Mr. Burns had said, he's got families, children come to school every day, some of them sleep in their cars, some of them are homeless, so, so, so that will help, uh, families as well, as well, but, uh, yeah, 13 million dollars...
It's gonna be open to everybody though, right?
13 million has to be spent on the homeless project.
They focus the meeting on just families that have children, so they don't have to live out there, because I know, I, I understand there's children, there's students, I've worked with students that are homeless, and I feel, you know, really, I have children of my own, that's horrible, but, um, the thing is, it's not that, it's just a lot of them, unfortunately, do, do drugs, and then they bring that into, and I, you know, there's restrictions, but they don't want to follow that, because they know there's no drugs allowed, you have to be clean, and they don't want to follow that, so that is my, my worry, my concern, we need to take care of our children, they, they go through so much, and they don't need that temptation of drugs around them, we have students here, we have children over there, and I just feel like, that's gonna be a magnet, "Oh, drugs, let's go over there." So we need to help prevent that.
And you know what, and the reason we're here, because we agree with what you said, yes sir?
Well, I'm sure most, a lot of you know who I am, I'm also the principal here for the school that's here locally, I mean, incidents like this, I mean, these are incidents that are occurring now, at least three, four times a month, I have to call the police, because something happens, as the kids are walking from this area over to my school, using the, uh, the little pathway that we have there. Again, I've called, I've asked, and what I've been told, we can't do anything about it. So what type of security, regardless of whether, I mean, this thing is gonna happen, what type of security are you gonna provide for our children, for our families that live in this community?
And I, and I volunteer at Dorothy's Kitchen, I volunteer, and I've been volunteering through my church for a while, at Dorothy's Kitchen, so this is not about discriminating against homeless, this is about providing solutions that keep the homeless safe, and keep our communities safe, keep our children safe, we cannot allow one more magnet, as this young lady over here mentioned, uh, for violence, for drug... for drugs, for other issues that arise, that we don't, we can't even start to think of those issues. By the time those, uh, issues arise, it's going to be too late.
I, I have to let you know, I think if, with the help of Lulak putting this small meeting together.
Thank you, by the way.
If we wanna have a.
Yeah, thank you to Lulak for that.
Yes, if we wanna have insisted on this meeting, you know, if we wouldn't have insisted on this meeting, I don't think you would have had an October 1st meeting. Seriously. So, this is on the fast track, and like, like Supervisor Fernando says, it might not be a done deal, but the train is already running. So, I think we need people, well, all you folks, because you, you all have family investment here. October 1st, uh, they're gonna tell you what the project consists of, why it needs to happen, and you, that's, that's where you need to.
Is there another meeting any other day?
No, that's it, and we're voting October 9th. The county already voted.
Can we change the times to seven here?
No, no, it's not our meeting. It's already, yeah, it's a, it's a city and county meeting.
We had to ask, can, I just wanna go back, because I know Judge Phillips, you're here. Monica's here. They had a meeting at Gavinoan School about a month ago. And this is where I let the school district know, because I found out about that meeting, and I went, and I said, "Wait a minute, you just can't have this meeting and say you're gonna put these shelters and not let the community know. I need to let my community know." So we were planning a meeting already, I have to clarify it, because I wanted to let my residents know, and they're talking with Chris, yeah, all this came through. But there was a meeting, right Monica? And we asked Alejo, and, and I think Eva Marie couldn't be here right now, but that's when Eva Marie, the school trustee, heard it from him, that they wanted to put it over here somewhere. And she moved on it, I think quickly, and let everybody know, and we were letting, "Hey, wait a minute, we need to have a community meeting, and we need to let the residents know."
So.
The county didn't follow through.
Look at the middle page of this. Look at the very, look at the whole thing. And you know, my, my thing is, is that it's easier for me, not being an elected official, so be so damn aggressive in the service, excuse my language. But that's what has to be done, okay? And, 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 and. Don't hesitate, next week. Let's tell Supervisor Phillips and Alejo, or, or the mayor, you know what, you guys have not been transparent. Look, it's right here. You're gonna, you're, the reason why they have to submit a plan, a joint city-county plan, Nick Chulos told me that today, the county administrator, they did the staff report, and we wanna copy, I only have one in my truck, but you can get it on the online from the county. They, they, if, they have to do it because of 12.5 million dollars. They have to have it submitted to the state of California, if it's not done, you don't get 12 million. So that, this, this thing is moving fast, and, 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 I, I just told Nick Chulos, "How can you have community engaged in, in two months, you haven't even started?"
Let them know who Nick Chulos is.
He's the county administrator of, administrator, he, he's an assistant to County Minister Lou Baumann. He's the one that did the staff report. If you go up on Monterey County Board of Supervisors, yesterday meeting, click on video, he's the one giving the staff report.
Out of curiosity, how long have they been sitting on this money?
Wait, Mr. Ramil, say something.
How long have they been sitting on the money?
They don't have the money, that's what this is all about. They have to get it.
They've been on the money for several months. Several months.
It's, no, the, 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 the information on the funding is that it got signed into law at the end of June, like June 27th or 26th. And, and, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just giving you the date. Um, that's when it was signed that the money was available. They've been working on this longer than that, but about the state funding, that's, that's, that's a different question.
The issue that, that, that I see, not just because of the Vietnam Vet Memorial, the issue I see is, if it's here, if it's there, if it's anywhere within the city limits, security. If we build such a fancy place that everybody that's homeless wants to go to, they're gonna come in from Santa Cruz, from everywhere. And then, if they can't get in because it'll be full, where they're gonna go? Right down the hill, right under the trees again.
We've had damage done to this park.
And that's the thing, we've gotta try and stop.
Yes.
Let them find, let's go, go for the funding thing, they can still do the blueprints, the only thing is, is, is as far as the land thing, okay?
It's the location, that's the problem.
It's the location.
It's bad.
It has got to be good.
Yes sir?
My opinion, my opinion was to my street. My opinion is perfect, Fort Ord, Fort Ord is, is place, and, and place, and not leaving too much people. It's place and inside, no, no leave people.
And sir, you bring up a good point, but they're not interested in Fort Ord. No, no, because there's, there's more bureaucracy.
Yeah, Marina, Marina owns Fort Ord, and the college owns the rest of it.
There's county-owned parcels at Fort Ord.
Just trying to get the cemetery for the veterans to have a place to get buried.
The county-owned parcel at Fort Ord.
Took years, we dig up, almost 20 years.
You know what, but, but those would be, those would be great questions for October 1st. Because here you're talking to people that are on your side.
What they sign for no one in here, October 1st?
The meeting.
But you know what, petitions are great, but there's nothing like you being present.
You have to be there.
Yeah, be there. Firmas valen, pero el cuerpo que esta y hablando. My prediction, no disrespect to children, to homeless folks, look at, unless you were there, you were there, look what was happening yesterday, which is fine. You know, my prediction, next Monday, some of this, they're gonna have the homeless people there. And they're gonna put the homeless people between them and us. That's what's gonna happen. That happened yesterday, and the only people that spoke yesterday was the homeless folks, and they did a great job. But there was, because most of the, or 95% of this community was either working or wasn't aware the board of supervisors was having. And the homeless that we're talking, we're talking about the facility they're in being shut down. They didn't even have the foggiest idea what the hell is going on. I think, I think the great message is, several of you had said, you know what, we're not fighting any homeless people. We may have homeless in our family. Uh, what, what it is, is the site itself, and more than anything else, they didn't even give us an opportunity to express, express our views. October 1st, 6:30 PM. And first team. If we stand united on this, not questioning, if we stand united next Tuesday, or any other, or even the city council.
Yeah, Mike's here, my eyes are French, October.
Pero va a haber gente también que va a poder hablar.
First team, we're all. So next Monday, and even the city council meeting, or any other meeting, if we stand united on this, you tell the school boards, you tell the city council, you tell the mayor, you tell all five supervisors, or even the state assembly, or anybody else, this is non-negotiable, period. If, if we believe, and that's where we stand, and all of us have to, if we're there, all of us have to give us. Alguna otra pregunta, another question before we leave? Also, if you can't make it, send them an email, send it to the clerk of the board, send it to the, the city council clerk. If you can't make it, do it in writing, that way they can't say that they've never heard from you. I will tell you, no disrespect, being an elected official for 25 years straight, nine and a half part-time on the city council, 16 years full-time board of supervisors, my prediction is, the electeds, with a few exceptions, this is, this pressure here, this, this conocimiento here, that's what makes an impact. You can send all the letters, you can send all the me emails, and you know what, my prediction is, it's not gonna have an effect, because they've already put this train on the track without consulting. If you can't make it.
We're stuck with it. If we don't mobilize, if we don't show up, you know what, you might as well show up for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. We'll take care of our own homeless, but Carmel, Monterey, the peninsula, pick up the pace. Help your, help yours too, and you know what, don't push them onto our city. We'll take care of our own, we will always take care of our own. But you know what, Salinas is not a dumping ground. We're not.
Well, remember what that said, remember Supervisor Alejo is our supervisor here. He's the chairman of the board, he, he was invited here today. So, no, no, he's busy, you know, I'm not saying he was invited, if he's not here, maybe he had a family's. But look at, October 1st, he will be there. So, he needs to represent, I live here in Isalinas, I mean, there's, all of you live in the area. And no disrespect, no disrespect, okay? You could also say, "You're, you're not my supervisor until you move." You don't have, you don't have to go up there and pat him on the back and do all that, they get that done every day. You don't have to say, "Ah, you're my supervisor." You know what, I'll be honest with you, that really has no effect. Thank you. Well, he's my su, he's my supervisor, so we invited him. So, alguna otra pregunta?
I just wanna make a comment on the mayors, because they've been, they're putting pressure, the mayors, they're, they're meeting all down the valley, to put pressure on the peninsula to have their own shelter in South County. Because we have everybody's homeless here. So they're putting pressure on them, you gotta build your own shelter over there and in South County.
So, so, I, if, if there's a chance I could report on a couple of things, I was at the, at the meeting that happened at 1 o'clock today.
Okay.
With the, with the, I forget what the committee's called, but it's basically the homeless coalition, but it's, it's all the, you know, Luis Alejo is the chair, Joe Branca, all the mayors and everything else.
The leadership group.
So, and, yeah, the leadership group. I understand, so, so, so let me report on two things. One is that the track of this location is going through one track. You know, one, you know, one, one process. The second is the state funding for, for, for this, um, money. And so, the, the, the money side of it, where they have to submit something by the end of the year, it means that by November, they had two options. One was to basically expedite it, because they know what funds need to happen, and the second was to slow it down and have a community engagement process. They picked the community engagement process out of it. This is for the funding for all homeless, um, programming in the county. Part of what they're putting on the table is that a certain percentage goes to this facility, but, but it's gonna cost more money than what they're applying for. And so, 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 they did vote today, um, and they did vote to go through an engagement process, that the city of Salinas staff will work, not just in Salinas, but in, in the regions, and that they commit to having, um, homeless centers, not just in Salinas, but they need to look at South County, and they, they, they need to look at the peninsula. This was all verbiage, until it's a reality, and, and you start picking, you know, just like us. You know, until they have a location and a site, and you're like, oh, the same thing's gonna happen if they say in Marina, on this corner, on this lot, neighbors, you know, there's gonna be a process there. We have a thing, an MOU was passed by the board of supervisors yesterday, um, that, that basically talked about the funding, but it also talked about the track of looking at this facility. It was a five-to-zero vote by the board of supervisors to start continuing this discussion about this site. Next step is gonna be the board of supervisors, I mean, uh, the city council in Nueva? On, on, on the 9th, and, and the meeting, the only reason why this meeting is happening is because this meeting is happening. You know, the, the first meeting is happening because this was brought up. But I just wanna make sure that everybody understood that there's two train tracks happening. One is for the state funding, and it's close to 10 million altogether. Um, and, and they're looking at a comprehensive, it has to be comprehensive, regional, uh, homeless, look at this. And, and San Benito's at the table, and so is all of Monterey County, mayors from King City, and, you know, and, and, uh, Nacio Velazquez from, from Hollister was here, and Ralph Rubio from Seaside, and, you know, a bunch of people. They're trying to come up with a plan, they are gonna do a community engagement process on how they're gonna apply for that funding. The city of Salinas and the county's gonna want some of that to go to this facility, but it's gonna be a process that you guys all should participate in. And then on a separate track, the county did agree to an MOU between the city and the county, and they passed it on yesterday, and it will go to the, to the city council on the 9th. So just so we don't get two things confused, there's two, two, two different tracks, all are affected with each other. But, but just so there's clarity on what the issue is.
And you know what, says that, and I appreciate that, you're, you're very good when it comes to clarifying those issues. I do wanna let you know something, even though all of the electors work for you, there would be no other meetings if we wouldn't have put this meeting together through Lulak, seriously. But, but, but let me tell you, on October 1st, if we're not careful, they're, they're gonna try to project us as anti-homeless. Seriously, that we're the bad people. And, uh, we cannot allow that to happen, because we do wanna work together, we wanna support our homeless, uh, people, especially our hard-working homeless people and the children. But at the same time, is this the best site for that?
It's about the location, not about the.
And if you look at yesterday's video of the board of supervisors at 1:30, you will see some of my former colleagues on the board, some of them are still there, saying, "Everything is now coming synchronizing between the city and county." That's a bunch of BS. I dealt with that for 16 years on this whole topic. We were talking about a regional, a, a 10-year plan when Barack was president, and how to implement that locally. That thing is so massive and big, I don't see how they're gonna get anything done with so many jurisdictions and so many, everything else. So everybody's got a, the time and date?
Everybody has a pamphlet to give to your neighbors?
And thank you, there's some coffee for Fort Ord?